Well, it's now we've got it. Well, the only thing where we're going to do is I'm working on the six.
Okay, I'm going to call this meeting to order. Please rise. Please welcome our invocations being led today by Pastor John Poole from the Praise Chapel here in Kingman.
Good morning. Let's pray. Father, we just come before you right now in Jesus' name and Lord, we lift up this meeting to you, God, that you would have right of way. Father, we pray for your wisdom. Father, we pray for your grace. Father, we pray for these deliberations, God, that they would go, God, in a way that would benefit both this county and its people. And Father, we thank you for it. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I need a motion to call for an executive session to be held on November 3rd, 2014 at 9:00 a.m.
So moved.
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number two, are there any committee reports? Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had Cyber Security Awareness Month. With it being National Cyber Security Awareness Month, we've listed it on several webinars this month on the topic. The first webinar was put on by a group of professional cybersecurity experts to discuss cybercrime in today's digital age. Nick Edmonds, a professional liability underwriter, spoke first about cybercrime in the banking industry. He mentioned that he has seen a trend with more attacks occurring on banking customers than on the banking institutions. It was stated during the webinar that banks are losing 250,000 to 550,000 per incident when it comes to bank fraud. Banks are liable for reimbursing personal accounts that are hacked. However, with commercial accounts, there's a gray area. There isn't much case law on the matter and most of the time, banks will not reimburse the businesses. Next, the addius Hoffmeister, professor of law at the University of Dayton School of Law, spoke about case law pertaining to law enforcement and technology in today's digital age. He mentioned a couple of recent Supreme Court cases in which the courts ruled on smartphones and social media. One he mentioned was Warshak versus United States Sixth Circuit, where the courts ruled the government seizure of private emails constitutes a violation of the Fourth Amendment. Police are allowed to ask a telecommunications company who a person called or text, but to obtain the content, they would need a warrant. Lastly, they talked about the best practices when it comes to loss prevention in the workplace. They mentioned that best practices are employee awareness training, periodic testing of computer security, patch management, always make sure your operating system and important software is up to date, and encryption. NACO's Cyber Security Task Force Chair, Chris Rogers, put on another webinar on critical infrastructure and the Internet of Things. Mike Echols, the Chief Information Security Officer for Maricopa County, spoke about the new Internet of Things concept, where every device in our home will one day be connected to the Internet. He mentioned that it's important to keep these devices updated. There are thousands of devices now connected to the Internet, such as thermostats, refrigerators. He said it's important to install only software and application from a trusted source and turn off the system if possible when not at use. Roger Ward, the Vice President of Academic Affairs at the University of Maryland, mentioned an enterprise risk management approach that higher education institutes have been using as a framework for managing cyber risk. It is designed to identify and mitigate risks that would impact strategic objectives. An ERM can provide a framework for determining risk tolerance, developing mitigating strategies, and allocating of resources. Chad Holmes, a certified information systems security professional who is familiar with state and local government infrastructure, spoke about how counties are vulnerable. Hackers are targeting water plants and local bus systems. Since 1988, the government has logged the confirmed software vulnerabilities and has an average of 5,496 visits per year since 2006. Things will only get worse, he said, with the Internet of Things containing an average of 25 vulnerabilities per device. These devices are offering location-based services and can threaten a home, utilities, and sensitive data and can even allow hackers to see what you're doing inside your home. Karen McDowell, an information security analyst with the University of Virginia, hosted another webinar with tips on how to stay safe online. Some of these tips she mentions were on how to detect what is legit email and what is not. She said ways to detect phishing emails are by looking at the headers and footers of the email, grammatical errors, and sections that may appear to be completely inaccurate. She mentioned that two-step verification is always a great way to protect your digital information. When it comes to social media, she recommends that individuals limit the amount of personal and work information posted on the web, always browsing with HTTPS, and check all your security settings on social media accounts. Communicate private matters privately. Remember what goes on the Internet stays on the Internet. She recommended that users only log to social media accounts by typing in the URL, not responding to an email request. She also recommended that you check yourself on Google once a month. Search for your name and your images as well. Other recommendations she gave were to update your devices regularly and turn on automatic updates. Install antivirus and make sure it is up to date. For smartphones, turn off the Wi-Fi auto-connect feature because cellular data is always more secure. She said that when it comes to your home wireless network, you should always change the default admin password on your Wi-Fi router to a stronger password. Always ensure your Wi-Fi network is a WPA2 encryption and consider installing an alternative DNS provider. With Ebola, this is a little outdated, but it happened in the last two weeks. President Obama spoke to local officials during a conference about the Ebola crisis. He indicates that while dozens of travelers coming into U.S., only one case has been discovered. He made it clear that Ebola is not an airborne disease and you must come in direct contact with a person or bodily fluids while they are exhibiting symptoms. Security or Secretary Burwell of Health and Human Resources indicated there will be a federal assistance as needed to any and all states. Secretary Burwell indicated that human and health resources, along with the CDC, has issued seven alerts. They are conducting webinars for healthcare professionals and there are hundreds of pieces of documentation online to assist in readiness. Lisa Monaco, conference coordinator, listed the four steps the federal government is taking. Control the epidemic at its source, mitigating the second order, leading and calling to action. The international community stop those infections, work on fortification of the international infrastructure. It was mentioned that there is a detailed checklist online for health officials to use for preparing Ebola. Now, we realize all the information is totally useless as none of it appeared to be true with the federal government. Western Regional Power Energy Committee had a webinar. Steve Azara, Director of State and Intergovernmental Outreach, spoke briefly on what the EIA is and how to navigate their website. The Energy Information Administration collects, analyzes, and disseminates independent and impartial energy information to promote sound policymaking, efficient markets, and its interaction with the economy and the environment by law, data analysis, and forecasts provided by the EIA are policy-neutral and independent of approval by any other officer or employee of the U.S. government. EIA gathers its information and distributes it to a range of stakeholders, including governmental entities and media, energy sector, and even private citizens. One task the EIA is known for is its various reports and publications posted to their websites, such as the Annual Energy Outlook, the Short-Term Energy Outlook, and the sales of fossil fuel produced from federal and Indian lands from '03 to '13, which are released annually. Azara touched briefly on the sales of fossil fuels produced from federal and Indian land publication by saying that the EIA estimates that the total sales of fossil from production on federal and Indian lands decreased by 7% during fiscal year 2013. Wyoming, the Federal Gulf of Mexico, New Mexico, and Colorado together amounted for 86% of the total production of natural gas on federal and Indian land in FY '13. Mexico ranked first in sales of crude oil and least conceded production and second out of all states in sales of natural gas production. Next, they went over a guided tour of EIA's website to show everyone what the site had to offer. They highlighted the data highlights section found on the right side of the website that shows current energy statistics, such as the price of natural gas and fuel. There's a spot on the website for their total or today in energy report that is short report showing the current energy trend. These reports always have charged and further information attached to them if people want to view more information on what is in the report. If you're looking for a specific topic, there is a browse-by tag section. You can type in a price, for example, and see all price reports and statistics. On the left side of the homepage is what's new and coming soon. A tab lists the most recent reports released along with upcoming publications. At the top of the page are a resources tab, which explain in detail educational historical facts about energy. For example, one can click on coal and get the current trends and issues along with data and analysis. At the very top is a tool selection that is handy for those wanting a listing of all data reports along with glossary items. Next, they went over the state energy profiles that can be found on their website, Energeography. They used Arizona as an example to state. Energy Portal will give you access to detailed data on energy consumption, supplies, and prices for your state. It also has a customized graph, charts, and maps to compare the findings to other states. There are data rankings compared to other states and are easy to search and find. Lastly, they talked about social media sites. They have a new Flickr site they have used to post all their graphics and images. Users can easily view and download everything they have along with a Twitter site. They provided a download link for everyone to get one of their newest publications called Renewable Energy and Transmission Sighting Coordination and Potential Impacts to the Military, which is not yet released on their website. But I do have that address if anybody's interested. I also attended the ACO Executive Board Meeting. We will be going over our legislative proposals in December starting. I'll chair their legislative proposals for next year. And so if anybody's interested, they can come to the conference in December and participate in that process. That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. Any other reports?
I have.
Okay, Supervisor Watson.
Informational update. The BLM Resource Advisory Council, just wanted to let everyone know that I was appointed for a three-year term on that. And along with Supervisor Mandy Metzger from Coconino County and our local representative, also a rancher, is Emmett Sturgill. The other item of interest that I'd just like to bring up, and possibly we can have a presentation on it at our next meeting or one after, is from the Emergency Management Services and the Mojave County Health Department. Because Mojave County is the crossroads of the Southwest, I deem it very important that we get the information about the Ebola virus out as much as we can and especially our employees and associates, so they know how to do and what to react to in case we do run across these cases.
Thank you very much, and I think we can do that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I think our Public Health Department has already put together something that's been shared within the county, but I think we should talk about it to the general public. Thanks. Okay. Next, we have a county administrator's report.
Madam Chairman, just to touch on that briefly. The Health Department and Emergency Management is going to be doing a presentation to our business planning group on Tuesday, and that's Tuesday morning. And then there is a plan, and it hasn't been finalized, to try to hold a voluntary meeting for our employees on Wednesday after work in this auditorium. And it's going to be televised and it should be open to the rest of the employees. I also hope that we're able to extend the same courtesy to our Bullhead City and Havasu offices. And other than that, I have no report today, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you very much. Motion to approve the minutes of the August 4th, August 13th, and August 18th, 2014 Board of Supervisor meetings.
So moved.
Second.
Second, the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Call to public. Those wishing to address the board at the Call to the Public regarding the matters not on the board agenda must fill out and submit to the clerk a call to the public request to speak for him located in the back of the room prior to the meeting. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to responding to criticism, referral to staff, or placing a matter on a future agenda. Comments are restricted to items not on the regular agenda, with the exception of the consent agenda, and must relate to matters within the jurisdiction of the board. We have one person signed up, Mr. Mark Shaver.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Mark Shaver, 4054.
My name is Mark Shaver, 4054 West Hiller Drive, Meadview, Arizona. And my comments are referring to the October 8th Planning Zoning Meeting, a possible breach of the public trust and a violation of either ethics or conflict of interest surrounding the chairman and an applicant representing the Sterling Project, in which the chairman, it was revealed that the chairman was engaged in a lawsuit for obstruction of that project. That, in my opinion, fits the criteria of either, he should have recused himself from the discussion, and he chose not to. What followed shortly after that was a tactical, in my opinion, a tactical browbeating of the applicant into trying to reveal confidential and proprietary information in a public meeting. Regardless of that, at towards the end, at the same, my next comment refers to them voting themselves to be on the subcommittee, five and five. To that, you know, to me, that's a quorum, and you have five on there and then five of those as a substitute, total control of the process regarding the general plan review. Other than that, I just don't have anything to say. I hope that you guys will take immediate action regarding that violation of trust between government and the people. You was way out of line on that. Thank you.
Okay, Mark, I don't think, did you give your address when you came up?
4054 West Hiller Drive, Meadview, Arizona.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, is there anybody else who wishes to speak for the Call to Public? Hearing and seeing none, I close the Call to Public. Next up is Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda, which are items 4 to 38 today, will be considered as a group and acted upon by one motion, minus any items pulled for discussion. Supervisors, do we have anything?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the Consent Agenda.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Public hearing. I'm opening the public hearing number 41. Discussion on Possible Action. Ray, approve the placement of a lien for a dangerous building abatement in the amount of $2,934.70 in accordance with Section 110 of the International Property Maintenance Code, Assessor's Parcel Number 228-05-0098, 4579 Caie Amigo, Fort Mojave, Arizona. Anyone want to speak with that, to that? Okay, I'm closing the public hearing.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 42. Discussion on Possible Action. Approve the Common Interest Agreement between Mojave County and City of Kingman in regards to the Walupi Valley Basin groundwater issues and the proposed BLM Roads Land Exchange contingent upon approval by the City Council of Kingman, and authorize the chairman of the board to sign the agreement on behalf of Mojave County.
Make a motion for approval. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. 43. Discussion on Possible Action. The Department of Water Resources denial of Mojave County's objections to Freeport Minerals Corporation's application, applications to sever and transfer certain water rights pertinent to land located within Planet Ranch and Lincoln Ranch along the Bill Williams Motion?
Madam Chair, if I may, I'd like to make a motion that we direct staff to hire an appeals attorney, that's what we're looking for, and pardon? Litigation attorney to further the interests of Mojave County.
I'll second that.
Did you get that? Okay, we have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I'm also going to put this at the end. We will be going back into executive session after this meeting. Number 44. Discussion on Possible Action. Authorize Mojave County procurement to solicit formal quotes for good quality used rodeo bucking and roping shoots. Any purchases to be paid from the $50,000 held in Fund 216 Parks for the Reparation Upgrade of the Rodeo Arena to be located in front of the main stadium at the Mojave County Fairgrounds in Kingman.
Motion to approve?
I'll second the motion, and thank you.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 45. Discussion on Possible Action. Ray, direct staff to assist and support Supervisor Bishop to schedule and hold a town hall meeting in the Board of Supervisors Auditorium to discuss water issues in the Walupi Valley Basin and other areas of Mojave County.
Motion to approve. Second, I'll second the motion.
Do we, you want to have a little discussion? You want to explain what this is about?
Sure. My office has received many calls and correspondence concerning our water supply and how Rhodes Farms' use of water will affect their livelihood in the future, and they also want to know what we're doing as a county to protect our water supply. So my thought is the town hall will be an opportunity for the public to get answers to their questions that are being discussed. I want to feel confident that we have good information out there, information that is based on facts. I want to alleviate any fears due to the misinformation that is being circulated. The county is actively gathering legal information and doing everything they can to protect our water rights. I want to let the public know that we are working diligently to address their concerns, and I feel that an open forum is the best way to accomplish this. So the opportunities that we present to the new business ventures need to be assured that we do have water for their growth, and we want smart growth that's going to flourish in the desert. So I trust that you, my fellow board members, agree, and I'll be asking for your input on who you'd like to invite as speakers to the town hall meeting.
Thank you. Do you have a date in mind for this?
I was hoping for a November 10th date. I don't know if that may be premature for the other board members, but that's the date that.
And would it be during the day or in the?
I thought would be to make it in the evening so that more of our citizens could attend, maybe around 5:30 in the evening.
Any other discussion? I believe we have a motion and a second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number 46. Discussion on Possible Action. Acknowledge receipt of Yuma County's June 2014 Report on Payment in Lieu of Taxes. Pilt and direct staff to use the report as a model to develop a Mojave County report on the options for the transfer of public lands.
If I could, Madam Chair?
Please.
Yuma developed, this is for the public's information. Yuma did a report, which I believe is attached to the backup data, which analyzed certain segments of their county and what the economic impact would be on Yuma if those lands, which were BLM lands, became private lands, and then compared those to the pilt funds and did something of a cost-benefit analysis. They went further, and they also discussed the history of public versus private lands, the exchange mechanisms, and incidental issues of that nature. I suggest that Mojave County engage in a similar report. However, I have some tweaks, which I think would make it a more in-depth report than what Yuma provided. First, rather than just looking at BLM lands, I think we should ask our assessor to assist us, and I believe he's already done a lot of this work, to break it down by category of lands and the value that that would come to Mojave County, under the various pilt formulas, and then under raw acreage values if it were brought into private production, using a very conservative estimate so that we don't necessarily overstate our case. I'd rather err on the side of caution than make some grandiose claims. And then more importantly to that, I would like that report broken down even further, not to just be the economic impact and a cost-benefit analysis to the Mojave County government, but also to the secondary taxing districts, school districts, fire districts, the library district, the flood control district, so that everyone who, on the most local level, can understand the economic opportunities that are going by, and then they can engage in an intelligent conversation. We made the point last week at the CSA meeting that knowledge is power. We're having a discussion based upon generalities. It's time we got into specifics, and I believe that this would give us the ability to discuss this transfer as it relates to Mojave County, the goods and the bads, how we do it, what the benefits are, and not just for the county, but for the school districts in Havasu, Fort Mojave, Bullhead City, Kingman, and elsewhere, and the fire districts. Because us telling people it's a good idea, that's great and wonderful, if that's the conclusion we come to. But I believe the various secondary taxing districts, even more local entities, they have to buy into this if it's going to have any chance of success, and therefore we should give them the information that they can undertake their own cost-benefit analysis.
Okay. Very good. And for, in case you don't understand the Yuma report, Yuma took it upon themselves to do a report like that, but not as involved as that, and it was very interesting in that report. They mentioned Mojave County. Yuma has generously offered up their county manager to assist any county who wanted their help, since they've already done it. Apparently, they have put together some kind of spreadsheet. It's kind of a plug-and-play. You put in numbers, and it tells you, you know, every county's land use and issues are different, and that's why we wanted to start. I mean, this is a beginning. This is going to be a long process, but there is a movement in the West for, because of our lands not, not being able to develop because of such a small percent being privately owned, and I am, I'm speaking for myself, but I think I speak for the board when I say that. We are, we are looking forward to looking at the options of what this might involve, and so I'm very in favor of this small start of this feasibility study.
Madam Chair, I think Mojave County is the largest, largest portion of BLM land in the state, and people need to understand that, and they continue to acquire land over the years. It's not like they started with a certain amount. They've added more to it, and that kind of goes back to the item we had before about Planet Ranch, where they continue just to add more and more land and take away our natural resources. So I'm totally supportive of this.
Very good.
I can add to that, too, for the public's information. Assessor Nicholson informed me that a few decades ago, Mojave County was 17% privately owned. We're now 16% privately owned, and that number is falling with the Planet Ranch and other deals that are on the table or being contemplated. Even though our federal and state officials all say they're in favor of transfer of public lands, specifically BLM lands, not the national parks, not the national forests, we're talking BLM lands here, into private ownership in order to grow our economy and provide a future for our youth. Instead, the net flow has been the other direction. So if you look at what is being done as opposed to what is being said, what is being done is the tax base is decreasing and economic opportunities are being taken away.
Right. And because we get this, this pilt, this payment in lieu of taxes from a federal government who is, by its own admission, broke, and we've learned that the state is a billion dollars in the hole, we would be neglect if we didn't look at all the options open to us for the future. Okay, so I think we have a motion and a second.
I move that we approve item 46.
Very good. I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number 47. Discussion on Possible Action. Adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2014-168, opposing the U.S. Postal Service's decision to close and eliminate the full-service post office in downtown Kingman that has been a mainstay of the community since 1935, and authorize the chairman of the board to execute a letter to the pertinent U.S. Postal Service contacts voicing our opposition. There are several people signed up to speak. Mr. Craig Graves.
My name's Craig Graves. I'm currently, my addresses are 53070 Spring Street, and then also 1823 East Lehman Circle, Mesa, Arizona. The reason we're here today is because the U.S. Post Office is looking at closing the downtown post office. It's been existence for a long time. It has the original mailboxes that have been in the post office and the city for, since probably the 30s. They're the brass, original ones, and so on. I got kind of thrown in this mix in that the post office, the downtown post office, my mother's had for probably 35, 40 years. She passed away, and so an emergency contract was issued to me. I took that contract with the understanding that we were going to keep it moving, just as it's always been. This is the second attempt in a long time for the USPS to remove the downtown post office. The first one, first attempt, was back in 1976, and that then-elect Mayor Joe Torres, and along with Alan Ring, which was the Chamber of Commerce, wrote letters to the USPS and also to Goldwater, Fannin, and Steiger, which were your, obviously, your senators and congressmen. And at that time, the letter that came back from Charles Kernan, which was the district postage manager at the time for the USPS, wrote and said even a contract station would not be feasible. I find it very interesting that here we are 35, 40 years later, and my mother's had the contract this whole period of time, that it has been profitable the whole period. The revenues that are generated down there is $225,000 average over the last four years. Let's see here. The operations, they came down September 29th, said that you have three, you have to move your mailboxes out. Your locations would be Bullhead, Yucca, Dolan Springs Chloride, or Walupi. Those are approximately 30 miles away, as far as the closest one. I don't understand this at all. As the supervisors currently know, we have the county assessor's office, the Kingman Chamber of Commerce, the ADOT, the Historic Route 66. Yes, they have Box 66. The Kingman Courthouse, Jail Services, Sheriff's Office, city, county governments, they all come down there and patronize, and we handle their mail. Just think of all the changes that are going to have to happen. Should I continue or not?
You can just finish up. I, I, can I have a, ask you a question?
Sure.
What is the business model of that post office? Does the U.S. Postal Service rent it from you, or do you, what is?
No, they issue a contract to me to run the post office in their behalf. I take directions from the USPS, which is the main post office on the hill.
Okay, so, and they pay you to do that?
Yes.
All of that?
Yes, they do.
It's all you?
Yes, they do.
Okay. You know, I think that the postal service is looking to downsize, obviously, there are financial problems. They've been going after some post offices in Bullhead City as well. It's not really a new notion that they're trying to downsize, and I probably think they saw an opportunity. But if it were to close and become, let's say, a private operation, would they still deliver there?
Well, at the current time, they're proposing a business within a business, and what that means is that they're looking for an area downtown that they could put a area where it will sell stamps, boxes, things like, you know, the packaging boxes. They will not have any PO boxes, which is revenue generator for them. As it is, they're going to give up $225,000 in revenues. If they do this and go into the private portions, what they're talking about, if that business closes, then so does that postage service. They tried this back in the 70s, 80s, which my mother had the post office, and she was into a hardware store Dover on Fourth Street. The post, the hardware store closed their doors, and thus, nobody could get into, do any mail services. So I think the bottom line is if we go down that path, and if that does happen, that it's only a matter of time before you will have no service for stamps, boxes, or stamps, postage, first-class mail, or anything like that downtown.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Graves. Bill Schilling?
Don't get in his way. I said, don't get in your way.
Yeah. Madam Chair, Supervisors, my name is Bill Schilling. I'm with the City of Kingman. My address is 4201 East Old Ranch Lane in Kingman. I'm here on behalf of the city to support your resolution to keep this post office open. Aside from So we'd just like to offer our support in that realm. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Schilling.
Thank you very much for coming down today, Mr. Schilling. Really appreciate it.
Okay. Lynda Bennett?
Good morning, Supervisors. Thank you, Gary Watson, for bringing this up. I voted for you, not because I know anything about politics, but because you had your sign at my veterinary office. I have a PO box to add stability to my life. I live, I'm on a fixed income, and I live in a poor neighborhood. I live on Kingman Avenue, 2167 Kingman Avenue. So I don't want my PO box to change. I've had it three years. And the way, I don't speak good in public here. The way, the main post office does not have enough PO boxes to cover us. I've had a PMB before, and if you move, they do not forward your mail. Maybe one, if you pay for it. If you keep that box, and, you know, they'll do it in an envelope, you know, one or two times, and you pay for it, but they do not forward mail. There are not enough PO boxes for us. And the low-income people are in a bad situation because they can't just, am I done? Okay. No, not quite. Okay. I don't really know how to do this. But anyway, the low-income can't just rush out and go to the main post office. And personally, I don't like the main post office. I've had issues with some of the people there. They had a sign that said only seeing eye dogs. My dog's a service dog. By federal law, she's allowed anywhere. They finally changed their sign. But anyway, so I have issues with them, and I don't want to go there, and I want this kept. And I've heard it's only political, that it's not really the economics of it, that they're not in the hole. That's what I've heard. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bennett. Okay, is there anyone else who wants to speak? I want to take a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2014-168, opposing the U.S. Postal Service decision to close and/or eliminate the full-service post office in downtown Kingman that has been a mainstay of the community since 1935 and authorize the Chairman of the Board to execute a letter to the pertinent U.S. Postal Service contracts voicing our opposition.
And I'd like to second the motion.
Okay. Motion second. All in favor? Oh, you want discussion more?
Yes. Madam Chair, I'm just a little surprised that our entire federal delegation, which this would fall under, that so readily jumped into the Planet Ranch thing unanimously hasn't taken a stand on this post office.
Actually, we've requested their entry into this ballgame, and it does seem to me rather ridiculous that the post office is looking into delivery on Sunday and then thereby trying to close local post offices. It just doesn't make any sense. But if you're dealing with a large national program like they have to with the employees, that's a very strong union. So it probably has to do with a union negotiation somewhere else in closing the small contracts that are providing a great service to our rural Arizona constituents.
Okay. Anyone else? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. That brings us to the end of our regular agenda. I'm going to entertain a motion to go back to executive session.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Meeting adjourned.
I second it, too.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
I'll see you later, Jean.
I'll get prepped.
Have a good day.
I'll get prepped.